Call this meeting in the Mobley City Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Lucas.
Here.
Kimmons.
Here.
McEwen.
Here.
Graff. Scubic.
Here.
Thank you. Everyone should have seen a copy of tonight's agenda in your packet. Are there any changes or questions regarding tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we have a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Show moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Tonight's agenda has been approved. Also in your package, you should have seen the minutes from the last city council meeting. Are there any changes or questions regarding the minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
Show moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes have been approved as written. Recognition of visitors, Mr. Bogowski.
No visitors this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, this is the time where if anyone would like to speak to the council a little bit later on in the meeting, please come up, see the clerk, grab a green card, fill out your name and address, and we'll call you up towards the end of the meeting and you'll have four minutes to address the council. Please see the clerk if you need a green card. Communication requests and informational items. Number two, a request to hold the 2025 Mobley Homecoming Parade on September 26, 2025.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the annual homecoming parade request. This was discussed at the work session at last meeting and had, council had the opportunity to ask questions. Staff has moved this forward for your consideration at this meeting.
Thank you, sir, for the clarification. Do we have a motion for the approval of the Mobley Homecoming Parade on September 26?
Show moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The Mobley Christmas Parade has been approved. Public hearing and receipt of bids. Number three, receipt of a proposal for infill development for 1209 Concanon Street from Pretz Contracting LLC. Do we have anything you want to add to that?
It's just a vacant lot there on the north side of Concanon there.
Okay. Mr. Pretz is going to be pretty busy this winter. Do we have a motion for the approval of the, or for the acceptance of the bid, please?
Show moved.
We got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Mark that as received. Number four, receipt of bid for crack seal machine. Looks like staff has received a bid from Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program for the purchase of a crack seal machine from Craftco, Inc. in the amount of eighty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty cents. So it looks like that needs to be replaced. So anybody have anything they'd like to add to that? Nope. Okay. Do we have a motion for the approval of the crack seal machine?
Show moved.
I'm sorry, the acceptance of the bid for the crack seal machine. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. The bid has been received. Moving on to tonight's consent agenda. Looks like it includes items five through ten. These items are considered routine and will be adopted with a single vote. Is there any council member that wishes to remove any single item for separate consideration? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the reading of the consent agenda?
Show moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First and only reading, please.
Bill number R-1882, a resolution of official intent of the city of Mobley, Missouri toward the issuance of industrial revenue bonds to finance an industrial development project and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. Bill number R-1883, a resolution authorizing contracting with Midwest Environmental Company for landfill sampling and analytical services. Bill number R-1884, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a crack seal machine for the Public Works Department from Craftco Incorporated. Bill number R-1885, a resolution repealing resolution number R-1860 and authorizing and accepting two change orders with Five Oaks and Associates LLC for the Fennel Community Center Improvements Contract. Bill number R-1886, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Bobcat compact track loader for the Parks and Recreation Department. And bill number R-1887, a resolution authorizing city manager to enter into a medical directorship agreement with the curators of the University of Missouri.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions from council regarding tonight's consent agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Show moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Tonight's consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Number eleven, an ordinance.
Yes, Mayor, I have an ordinance amending section six dash seventy-seven C of the city code related to alcoholic beverages. Ask that to be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance amending section six dash seven-seven C of the city code relating to alcoholic beverages.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance amending section six dash seven-seven C of the city code relating to alcoholic beverages.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
Show moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Scubic.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been approved. Number twelve, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance establishing the speed limit for Lantern Point, and I ask that to be read for consideration, twice for consideration of passage.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance establishing the speed limit for Lantern Point.
Any questions from council? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance establishing the speed limit for Lantern Point.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
Show moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Scubic.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been approved. Number thirteen, an ordinance.
Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, Missouri Limited Liability Company. Ask that to be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, a Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Any questions from council? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Pretz Contracting LLC, a Missouri Limited Liability Company.
Any further discussion? We have a motion for the approval of the resolution.
Show moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I'm sorry, which, we're on, oh, we're on thirteen, aren't we? We need a second reading, please, correct?
We read it twice.
Oh, just roll, roll call, please. Sorry, lost my place.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Scubic.
Yes.
Thank you. Now the ordinance has been approved. Number fourteen, a resolution.
Yes, Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Mobley, Missouri to pay expenses due between August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and September fourth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of four hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Ask that to be read once for consideration.
Thank you. The motion for the reading of the resolution, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First and only reading, please.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Mobley, Missouri to pay expenses due between August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and September fourth, two thousand twenty-five in the amount of four hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
Show moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. I hereby certify that there's sufficient money standing to the credit of the city of Mobley, Missouri unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution to meet the requirements of this resolution, City Treasurer Allison Boyd. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Resolution has been approved. That will do it for ordinances and resolutions for this evening. So moving down to anything else to come before the council. Consideration of two reappointments to the airplane, Airport Advisory Board.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, last meeting at work session, we discussed that two incumbent members of the board's terms expired, and they have applied for, to be reappointed, John Brillhart and Robert Creed.
Very good, thank you. Any further discussion from council? We have a motion for the approval of the two reappointments to Airport Advisory Board.
Show moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Two, reappointments have been approved. Number sixteen, consideration of appointment to the Electrical Board.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Electrical Advisory Board had an opening, and Mr. Chris Long submitted an application. He would meet the qualifications for the position, and he was discussed at work session last meeting, and the council moved forward to this meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for the approval of Mr. Long to be moved to the Electrical Board?
Show moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Mr. Long will be appointed to the Electrical Board. Number seventeen, consideration of approval for new liquor license applications.
Mayor and council, we've received new liquor applications from the following businesses. Italian Cuisine of Missouri, doing business as Joe's Italian under the new ownership by Caroline Heath. Los Amigos, under new ownership by Richard Stuck. And the Murphy's Oil New Rebuild, and we recommend approval of all three licenses.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for the approval of the liquor licenses?
Show moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The new liquor licenses have been approved. Okay. Number eighteen, public comments. Is there anyone that would like to come and address the council at this time? No takers tonight, huh? Okay. Okay, that's all we've got for the normal council meeting this evening, so we will entertain a motion to adjourn to a work session followed by closed session to discuss the status of legal matters.
Show moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Scubic.
Yes.
Okay. We are adjourned from regular council meeting. We will move right into work session. Okay. Number one on work session, request from the Mobley DFW Post 2654 to hold the 2025 Veterans Day Parade on November eighth, 2025.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, city manager. This will be the standard route, as usual, about the same amount of participants, and I'll have some volunteers as well.
Okay. Very good. Good event, seems to attract a lot of, a lot of people, for sure. Any questions regarding this event from chief? Nope. Any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay. We will move this one forward. Number two, a request to hold the 2025 Cowboys for Christmas Parade on November first, 2025.
Same thing here, standard route, probably the same amount of participants and some volunteers as well. Goes off every year, no issues.
Very good. Any questions for chief on this one? Any objections to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Okay. We will move this one forward to the next council meeting as well. Thanks, chief. Okay. Number three, consideration of a reappointment to the Board of Adjustment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Melissa Anderson's term on the Board of Adjustment has expired, and she has submitted an application to be reappointed to that board.
Okay. Any questions regarding the reappointment, council? Any objections to moving this one forward? Okay. We will move the reappointment forward to the next council meeting. Number four, consideration of an appointment to the Electrical Board.
The Electrical Board's opening for the representative from Ameren was open, and Mr. Tony Mullen submitted an application, and he would meet the qualifications.
Did the, the other one just drop off? Is that, they didn't want to be reappointed, I guess? Is that? Okay. Okay. Any questions regarding the appointment to Electrical Board? Any objections to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Nope. Okay. We will move this one forward. Number five, cooperative agreement with St. Pius Church for alleyway repaving.
So this is the alley behind the church, and we didn't have it on our list for this year's paving, and they were wanting to see if they could move that up the list. It does probably need to be repaved in the next few years, but we talked to them about it, and they said they would be willing to contribute fifty percent of the cost if we could move it up to this year's schedule, so we felt like, you know, it's close enough, that's, that's a worthwhile deal to get it moved forward.
Sure. Okay. Any questions from council regarding this request? Nope. Any objections to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Okay. We will move that one forward. Number six, notice of a public hearing for rezoning application submitted by Tony Stewart to change the zoning for seven oh six and seven oh eight West Coach Street to R-three multifamily dwelling district. This property is currently zoned R-two, one and two family residential district.
So this is a single tract land that has, would have three duplexes on it. It's kind of hard to see there, but they're used, in the past, there were multiple houses on this thing, two-story houses in the past, it's all gotten demolished. So the duplexes would be less area than what used to be there, but as he wants, wants to keep it all as one lot, to have three units on there, three duplexes on there, it needs to be either R-three zone or split up like a lot split, so this is the path they chose.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sanders regarding the zoning change? Nope. Any objections to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Okay. We will move this one forward. Number seven, notice of a public hearing for rezoning application submitted by John Wales to change the zoning from two oh nine, for two oh nine Jefferson Avenue to B-three, general commercial district. This property is currently zoned R-two, one and two family residential district.
So the properties are all on there, there's all, I, Mobley Street is zoned commercial, and all of the lots in that block on the back half that are residential, as you move north or south a few blocks, there's some where the business or commercial extends over all the way past Alt Street in some cases, but there are, whenever you have boundaries like this, the lots will kind of move in and out. Council or staff didn't have any really strong recommendations one way or the other, it just kind of depends on, you know, how the, that, that feels. I mean, you're on a boundary between commercial and residential, and it, there's places where they're going to overlap, so we didn't push one way or the other. P&amp;Z is determined to move that forward.
Okay.
And again, this is, might totally keep in mind, at that time, we were considering two things, there was an application for a site plan and a zoning change. This is strictly the zoning change, so I said, you know, you have to consider that we're looking only, is this zoning right for B-three commercial? The site plan was not considered in that process because it's a separate item.
Tom, have there been any comments or complaints from any of the adjacent property owners?
We did receive calls from, I believe, three area, people in the neighborhood that were concerned, didn't really want to see it come, that being commercial back in behind them, and so that was explained to P&amp;Z.
Yeah.
We received calls.
I don't, I didn't recall hearing that at P&amp;Z. Okay.
Yeah, we, they, we, I think we even have a list of names, but I mean...
Okay. Anybody have any questions regarding this specific? I know this is one that's a little bit out of the ordinary. You know, my questions would probably be more geared towards the site plan and what kind of fencing and border and that type of thing would, would go up or be required to go up, so they didn't have to see everything in there, but that obviously isn't related to this, so. Any questions on this particular one?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So which property would you say would be affected the most by it? Would it be the one just to the north?
There's only, this property on, the property that's being requested to be zoning change has an alley on the east side, a street on the south side, and a street on the west side, so they only border property on the north side, so. And there's a house right there now, as you can see, on the property that's being requested. I can't tell from that diagram, I'm kind of thinking that there's an open lot north of it, so there's not a house immediately adjacent to it. And...
And this would be primarily used for parking for the business, or do we know what the...
Yeah, that's what, well, that's what they say they are, but, and I'm not doubting them, but I mean, we're just saying, you know, we can't make that, that's part of what the site plan would have to be, you know, when, when the zoning is changed, we have to look at all the potential uses in that district, because we approve the zoning today, and then we say, go forward, and if they change their mind, don't do this, then anything in the B-three could go there now. And that B-three is typically what restaurants, gas stations could be, you know, things like that, so it's your typical items there.
The one concern that I, that I had heard was, you know, junk cars and things stacking up back there, and I, I know that's probably more related to the site plan, but that's one of the things that I...
Certainly, that's one of the things, you know, and, and we're concerned about, you know, and one of the things I will tell you is that anything in the B-three district has to have, when they adjoint a butt, a property that's like locked a lot like that on the north would have to have a solid fence screening it, or if they have storage of any items back there, it has to have a solid fence screening it, and so as a, whether it's this business or another business, they're not going to have something back that it's unscreened, that will be requiring that, so.
Okay.
We can't specify what, you know, their, I think the thought was, you know, their plan was to have a chain link fence with the mesh in there, you know, and we, it, our regulations require, you know, some type of screen, at least six feet, it could be a berm, it could be vegetative, it could be a wooden fence, it could be the chain link, so we can't be picky on that unless it's a conditional use. On a conditional use, then they can apply specific standards, well, the site plan, it just has to meet those guidelines.
Sure. Okay. Thanks for the, for the explanation. Any other questions for Tom regarding number seven?
How close were the neighbors that called in with concerns?
One was on the, up north end of the block, completely up the north end of the block, that I know, well, that's the one I took, I don't, I don't have an answer for you as far as where the other ones are.
Okay. Okay. Anybody got any other, any other questions? Any objections to at least getting this forward to the next council meeting? Okay. We'll go ahead and move this forward to the next meeting. Number eight, an ordinance amending section ten dash one seventy-nine of the city code relating to occupancy permits, one of our favorite things. Does anybody...
Mr. Mayor, what you have in front of you is kind of staff's understanding of some of the feedback that's been received of what would actually be required of an ordinance change to reflect some of the efforts of the occupancy committee and the other discussions that have been had by council, and that would be extending the occupancy permit to a three-year window instead of a one-year window that is currently in place. So that, that is what's in front of you tonight.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I think one of you had wanted some specific clarification. Can you elaborate on the specific clarification that you...
So on the, on the three-year, it, it stated that change of occupancy or ownership, the, it would still be, the occupancy process would still be required. So how, what does a three-year actually change on that?
No, it would, it would be the first occupancy change after the three-year period, so if it passed today, you could change occupancy ten times between now and end of three years. It's the first one that changed, change of occupancy, like we do right now, it's just like, they can change occupancy ten times between now and twelve months from now, but the first one after that has to have an occupancy inspection, so it'd just be a different calendar date we're looking at, it's just we're looking at three years down the road. So if somebody moved in in two years and five months, and they stayed for another three years, that'd be three and a, five years and a half years between occupancy.
Okay. It, it just, I was confused by the wording, that's...
No, that, that'd be the same program.
That's what I figured you meant, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, same as we do now, it's just a different date.
Okay.
Tom, the, I know one of the recommendations that we had given to staff was the twenty-twenty or later with, would not have any, any inspection, is there, do you guys particularly not like that, that idea, or can you maybe elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, we had several things, there were, the committee had several things talked about, and this was the only one that I was actually, I understood it was going to be applied, so I misunderstood that.
Yeah, I, I think we can say that there was kind of a miscommunication between staff and council on what was being asked for.
Okay.
One thing I would mention on that is to think about, is if you think about the trailers, for example, you know, we can't, we had a date, anything from that date, we, instead of setting nineteen ninety or nineteen two thousand, it's like, we were more, I think, talking about ten years or a timeframe, because, you know, if you have a date, and, you know, twenty years from now, nobody looks at that, you know, that, a date on the calendar, so I think a moving target, I'd be saying, a house of this age range would be whatever you pick, it'd be easier to track.
Okay. Okay.
Because that's, you gotta think about also the water office is going to happen.
Sure. We're not trying to make it too complicated, but also listen to the concerns of, of, you know, the landlords and the, and the other people in the community, so this is one of the ones that had kind of come up several, several times to a few of us, so that's why it's obviously coming up now.
I just feel like, I just would say, for tracking purposes, rather than a year, I think a certain amount of years, if you have a number of years, what you think is a reasonable, that's kind of moving from the time they come in.
Okay.
Something to consider.
Okay. Council want to see this move forward the way that, the way that it's written now, without any changes?
Just, Mayor, just, conversations I've had with landlords, I think the, the three years would be, would be a good start. I can't really express anything else that I think would be a real strong addition to make, I mean, I'm obviously open to hearing others, I, but I think the three years would be, would be a good start, kind of would, would help.
Sure.[1697.45] Sure, sure. And it doesn't mean that we, we can't come back to it as well at some point, so are you too good with moving forward with the way that it stands as right now? Okay. Okay, we will move this one forward to the next council meeting. Let's see. Number nine, receipt of bids for dead tree removal at Oakland Cemetery.
Well, that's within the allowable range, I don't know, I tried to include a picture there so you can see that, we have a large, I think it's an ash tree, but it's, it's over some hundred and fifty-year-old gravestones that are irreplaceable, and I'm just, you know, I don't think we can wait, that, you know, we're going to start losing limbs and damaging stones, but because of that, it's going to be a lot, it's outside of the limit, I think I've got twenty-five hundred dollars in that line item, so that's why I'm bringing it up.
Okay. Just something that has to be done.
I, I feel it does, if, you know, one limb drops out there and takes out some of the two gravestones that are that age, we, we won't get them replaced.
Right, right. Makes good, makes good sense. Any questions for Tom on that? Okay, any objections to moving that one forward? Okay, we will move that one forward to the next council meeting. Number ten, let's see, a resolution authorizing the sale of surplus city property by auction on Purple Wave.
This is more of a housekeeping item, so we have budgeted equipment, as new equipment comes in, we want to get rid of the old, and so this is just setting the table to do that this fall, once the new equipment arrives.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Bach? Any objections to moving this one forward? Okay, we will move this one forward. Number eleven, Fox Park Pavilion Replacement.
This is also a budgeted item, as noted previously at the budget meetings and so on, the old pavilion is not only sized inadequately for today's needs, but from the concrete to the roof, it just needs everything, so we're better off replacing it with a new facility that's same width, twenty feet longer, steel-built like the one here at Depot Park, and as part of a master planning process, on the staff level, park board and with Devin Snodgrass, we're looking at relocating it immediately south of the restroom, so essentially in the core of the park, you have your restroom, pavilion, and playground, kind of your young families area, just makes better design sense to have that at the core.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Bach? Any objections to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move this one forward, thank you, sir. Okay, last one on the work session agenda for this evening, number twelve, an ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for funding of Placer AI Services. Feel like we may have a few questions on this one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have both Kaylee and Miranda from the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development here to answer any questions you might have. This is something that the city's been a part of for a few years, the funding allocations have shifted a little bit this year, and MAADC has joined the effort, so happy to answer any questions.
Sure, sure. Please, Scubick?
So I think the Placer AI gives a lot of good information, we can see who's coming, who's visiting the community. My question is, what are we doing with that? How is, how are we capitalizing on that? It's really cool information to have, but just a little bit of explanation on that would be great.
We, I mean, you guys get it in your packets, we write a report for you guys, we do it for any of our tourism events, not just chamber-related, but also anything that happens within Randolph County, and then Kaylee uses it on the business aspect.
Yeah, so for the economic development side of things, I've used it quite a bit in grant writing, a lot of those reports require specific demographics that I can pull on target, we just used it on a Friends of the Park grant, so that was very helpful. Also use it for improvement, I can build some really cool geo-fencing, build some neat maps in there, I've just recently been able to get in there and dig around, and it's very similar to the tool that we use now at economic development, so this would allow us to cut costs, use a similar resource and have all of our data in one place.
Excellent, yeah, thank you.
Is it, I, I know you, you were using a different one at one time, so you're going to get rid of yours.
We're going to share, we're going to use the word called share, we're going to share.
Now, that's the next question, because we all know where we went with that about a year ago. Have we clarified and made sure that, that they're good with the sharing and that there's no, there's no problems? No problems with that at all?
I'm already in and using it, so I just...
Okay, very good. Yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot of very valuable information, can, I know you use it in your, as far as from a business perspective, grants and whatnot, is there anything that you've changed based on the data that you've received from Placer?
Yeah, so when I sit down and do the budget for the grant process to market anything we do, we target it more towards Saint Louis or more towards Kansas City, it helps determine what direction I want to go based off of the event and how many we pulled from the previous year.
Very good, okay. Well, sounds like we're getting our money's worth, all, all departments are getting money's worth with that, and I know you, you use it as well, and, and the county's helping in this effort, so, very good. Does anybody have any other questions for these ladies? Okay, thank you guys very much. That will do it for this evening in our work session, entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.